I'd like to call the December first Finance Committee meeting to order. The Chair would entertain a motion on the bills.
Mr. Chairman, make a move to, uh, make a motion of, uh, pay the bills. The amount, uh, to be paid in the amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents, which includes checks of payroll and liability on the November fourteenth in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents for a total of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
And I will second the motion. Um, did you have any questions on the bills?
I've got, I've got a couple of questions. Um, and so I, I went through all that I had on our, our, and I have a bill here for the solid waste of seven hu- uh, seventy-five thousand seven fifty. I was wondering if the population in Riverton had suddenly spiked. Our previous averages have been in the sixty thousand and some in January and February or forty, in the forty thousands. And I'm wondering why.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is we had an outstanding balance from a partial month that we had to catch and, and pay on that. So it wasn't necessarily having anything to do with the amount of trash or, you know, population increase, any increase in what we were disposing. It was more taken care of, partial month that had not been taken care of.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we see we had fourteen thousand two hundred and twenty-five, um, past due from the previous time. So it's, it's pretty much in line with the fifty-five. Will that be sixty-five, sixty?
Sixty-ish.
Yeah, the sixty-ish, which is pretty normal for what we have.
Okay. Still don't like it.
No, I don't think any of us like it. I think we ought to vote for a decrease. What do you think?
I totally agree.
Well, I think this next year we need to request some type of representation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No, another.
Okay, that was actually one of mine and then I had, um, a couple others. The, the Golden Buffalo, page three of twelve, there was a twenty-dollar pocket watch repair. Wondering if that was Courtney's pocket watch or?
Your Honor, that was a, a pocket watch for a retirement gift that we had to have engraved and fixed. It kept falling off.
Ah, it's always a nice touch in a gift.
Um, last question, Fremont Motors, is that a, um, uh, a police vehicle or?
Your Honor, which, which line item is that?
Uh, it's, um.
Two oh one five one?
Two oh one five one, correct.
Yes, Your Honor, those are two police vehicles.
Oh, two?
Two.
Not one?
No, not one.
Are we, are we buying vehicles or, or, um, utilities? What are, what was, just as curious.
You mean, are they completely specked out or what?
No, 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 no. Are they, the model, is it a four-wheel drive?
Oh.
Uh, Tahoe, not Tahoe, but, you know.
Oh, you mean like a sedan versus an SUV?
Mr. Chair, it's the, um, Taurus Police Interceptor. It's an all-wheel-drive vehicle. It was, I think, worked with the Capitol plan that the chief has, uh, to replace some of his aging vehicles. So they're not the Expedition model. I know he's been using, um, these are the Taurus, the newer Taurus models that are the police interceptors. They're a little tricked out for, um, police usages.
They're heavy-duty.
It's nice that they're all-wheel-drive. Oh, I think they're gonna help age out some of the Crown Victorias that they haven't.
Oh, good. Thank you.
And my other question, um, under the over expenditures, the Riverton Ranger section is listed as part of the water supply. Is that advertising for substantial completion? Is that, okay. All right, um, yes, there's no other questions. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I guess the motion carries. So any other business for us today, Stephen?
Nope.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Would Councilmember Guard lead us in the pledge?
Thank you.
Let you lead you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wartness.
And I am present. Thank you. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Then moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number six, communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this time? Okay. Uh, is there a city staff response to a previous citizen's comments?
Aye, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, the Chair would entertain a motion, uh, for the, uh, let's have the reading of the, um, consent agenda items by title only first.
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes December first, two thousand fourteen, Finance Committee meeting, and approval of Finance Committee recommendations for December first, two thousand fourteen.
Your Honor, thank you.
The recommenda- recommendation of the Finance Committee for claims to be paid in the amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for November fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty-one cents for a total of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to approve the cons- consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Agenda item number nine, our recreation presentation highlighting two thousand fourteen successes. City Administrator, uh, thank you.
I, I can introduce Mary Axel. Um, she's been an instrument in, in the our recreation program. She's always got a smile on her face. I don't know if you've noticed that, but, uh, she's here to give us an update.
We have the funnest job ever, besides yours, of course. Um, this is Amara Ferring, who is with me, and, um, we hired her.
April, the end of April.
And so she's brought a lot of exciting things that I'll let her talk about to you guys. In your council packet, we included our, um, kind of our summary of what we've done this year, in this calendar year. And it's been a really exciting year. You can see we served a total of, um, fifty-two-hundred people in our community through two hundred and fifty-four different classes. And that was between, um, January first and right now. So really, we haven't quite finished this year, and so we'll have a bigger number than that at the end. Um, a couple of things that are new for us, we've acquired the administrative responsibilities of the Hot Notes Cool Nights, which is a really popular, um, concert series in the summer. And so we're excited about that. We joined their board and they're gonna handle all of that for them. And then we've, um, and I'll let Amara talk a little bit more about this, but we've expanded quite a bit into the theater department and the arts and offered some new classes to high schoolers and partner, made some unique partnerships that we haven't had prior to this. Um, we did, one thing that's not on here, we did attend the State Parks and Rec Conference in September in Jackson. And it was really eye-opening for Amara and I. A, we were the smallest recreation program there. We were shocked, Pinedale, um, what, population two thousand, has eleven people in their recreation staff. That doesn't include their parks. So of course, we thought that none of them had anything to do. Um, we get the opportunity at the next Parks and Rec to showcase our summer academy where, that's one thing we've always shown you guys, we're really proud of that. Um, that's the second thing on our bullet-toed thing there where we had seventeen hundred participants in three weeks and do a hundred and sixty-one classes. And so at the next State Parks and Rec, we're gonna showcase that because we feel like it's a pretty unique program in the state of Wyoming. So we're excited to have that opportunity. And then I'll let Amara address some of the other things that we realized that Riverton is ahead of the rest of the state with our little recreation department that we're pretty pleased with. And the last thing I just have to report, if you guys didn't swing by Sunset and Major Avenue today, they started assembling their ice skating rink. So we're really excited about that. Um, we had to move it from the RJFL field to the Babe Ruth Field because of the slope of the area. And Babe Ruth Field has less, but we kind of like that. Babe Ruth has agreed to donate the lights and the use of their concession stand, just as the football program had. Um, but the benefit there, we can lock the gates. So if the ice is too soft or after hours and we don't want kids in there, or adults for that matter, we can lock it up and secure it, which is really gonna be nice. So we're, um, I'm not a winter fan, but as of today, I'm praying for cold weather. So I'll let Amara tell you a little bit about the direction we're headed and, um, the neat things that we've done.
Yeah, um, so one of the cool things about our job is we view recreation as anything that you do for fun. Um, so one thing we realized at the State Recreation Conference was, um, at the time, I don't know what progress other recreations have made since then, but we're the only recreation program in the state to offer arts programs. So, um, this fall, we offered stage makeup, um, costume design and improv. Um, I partnered with Annette Thornton at the Riverton High School and with Melinda Garcia at, um, Wind River High School to, um, see what they needed for their drama students to be able to compete at state drama. Um, and a lot of them tend to do more acting because that's kind of what you do in high school. That's mostly what's offered. Um, so we were able to offer the tech side of theater, which was really exciting. So we have some students going to state drama this weekend, um, to compete with stage makeup, which is very exciting. Um, and then, um, kind of where we're going with the arts, so we're gonna continue to do improv. Um, we will have some, um, some more drama productions, hopefully some smaller drama productions this summer, kind of what I'm hoping for. And then we're starting a new program called Unplugged, which will be, um, a partnership with the library where we will have musicians, um, come in, do, and do complete acoustic sets. So it can be any type of music that they like, any type of, um, musician can come in as long as they don't have to plug in an amp. So acoustic guitars, um, acoustic drums, um, we do pianos, all that stuff. So it should be pretty exciting. Um, and then another thing that we recognized at the State Parks and Rec Conference, um, as far as marketing goes, is that we're the only recreation department to offer all three social media platforms. So we use Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, um, which have been super beneficial for us, I think. Um, we have eight hundred and twenty-nine Facebook followers, which is awesome because then we can loop Facebook into Twitter and into Instagram. So we're doing really well as far as social media marketing.
So Sherry Shelley just got here and she is also the third part of our recreation and offers a huge benefit. And she would like to give a summary about the community garden. Perfect.
We're quick this evening.
I just wanted to talk for a few minutes about the community garden. Many of you are aware that that is a, um, city and college combined partnership. Uh, it, because it's located at the college, it's, um, easy to lose sight of that. It really is the result of Bill Urbikite's vision for the community and the much, the deep, a lot of work that he put into getting it, the whole thing organized and started. Um, it kind of fell into my lap because I love to garden and, um, it fit in with our mission at the College of Community Outreach, too. We have ninety plots in the garden currently, which is an enormous garden. It's the biggest one in the state. Uh, they, each plot's ten by fifteen feet, which doesn't sound like a lot, but you'd be absolutely flabbergasted at how much produce and, um, garden things come out of the garden every year. Uh, we have about seventy-five Riverton families who are benefiting from the community garden. Uh, most people use, get one plot. They are allowed to have two. So there are a few larger families that do rent two plots. Um, it is fully rented all of the time and I have a waitlist every year to take up any plots that are left, um, open when people move away or move into a new home that allows them to garden on their, on their own premises. Um, it's a fantastic project. The city contributes, um, mulch, when I call Greg, he brings me dump truck full of mulch and, uh, and a number of other kind of behind-the-scenes things that, um, that are what make it a partnership. So I would just like, on behalf of all of our gardeners, to thank you again and to tell you what a wonderfully successful project that has been. There's just, um, it's really an amazing project. Does anybody have any questions?
How do the plots, does a person, uh, rent them from you or?
Yes.
Okay.
They're rented on an annual basis.
Okay, what does that cost?
Forty-five dollars. They, uh, for the whole season, which is really phenomenal.
Water and et cetera?
The water, which is automatically, um, distributed through a amazing sprinkling system that Ron Hammer put a lot of time into designing and installing for us. It's protected with a deer fence because we have this resident herd of deer up there that love the garden, yeah.
I hit one of them one night.
Oh, deer. Yeah, um, they, they are quite drawn to the garden, um, vegetables when they can get to them. The fence has been phenomenal for keeping them, you know, out. Uh, we have a tool shed that the, uh, County Recreation Board, uh, gave us a grant to, to construct and put there so that people can leave their own tools. We have also a growing collection of community-owned tools that people have contributed. So we have wheelbarrows and all kinds of, um, hand tools, no motorized things, but, um, what we have works very nicely for us.
Pre-technical assistance?
Yes.
I would need a lot of that.
I, I do try to send out, uh, email messages about, you know, when we have an outbreak of some kind of pest or something is getting ripe and people need to be paying attention to that, or when, when it's appropriate to plant what things at what times. And we have little classes in the garden through the summertime, um, that help new gardeners particularly. And, and some of those are done by current gardeners. I mean, we'll just kind of tap into somebody who seems to be, you know, have the, the best corn patch in the garden and, and get them to, to talk to the rest of the gardeners about how that works, what they planted and when, and how much amendments they've used and all that kind of thing. So there's a lot of sharing of information and, um, lots of really nice friendships that have come from the garden as well. Produce.
Any other questions, anyone has?
Your Honor?
Yes.
How big are the patches or the plots?
They're, they're ten by fifteen feet, which is really teeny, but they're, it's really amazing soil. Used to be an old alfalfa field and it's very fertile. Um, people produce amazing amounts of produce out of them.
This is located at?
It's just east of the campus, kind of between the Brunton Building and, and that big, uh, empty, not empty, but the big grass area in front of the school, by the highway. Sort of where the electronic sign is behind that, towards. It's hard to miss. If you look for it, you can't hardly miss it, so.
Do you, do you have room to expand or are you at maximum?
No, we're maxed. I'm maxed. Um, honestly, there's a, a kind of a limit, um, of time and energy that can go into it. Bill's vision was to have them all over town and we talked about a number of alternative or additional locations. Um, he really wanted me to agree to deal with one down by where the old hospital was on that property, which is, uh, would be overwhelming. It, it's a surprising amount. I mean, when I agreed to do it, I thought it would just be really quite straightforward. It turns out to be quite a bit more complicated than that, but, um, but it's, it's a great project. It's really gratifying.
Having the piece of ground is the easy part, huh?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's absolutely correct.
Okay. Any other questions, anyone has?
Thank you, ladies, for coming this evening. We appreciate hearing what recreation R is doing.
Thank you, and we appreciate your guys' ongoing support very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll have a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one, repealing slash revising RMC Title II, Article III Rules of Procedure.
Uh, would the city clerk please read ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, this is a first reading of ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one. An ordinance repealing sections two point zero four point zero nine zero B, two point zero four point one three zero, two point zero four point one five zero through two point zero four point four two zero, and revising section two point zero four point one four zero of the Riverton Municipal Code pursuant to rules of procedure in the conduct of public meetings.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion for the public hearing?
Your Honor, I would move to open the public hearing regarding ordinance number fifteen dashes zero zero one.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. I now declare the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this issue?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, I, I just realized we need to get the report, don't we, prior to?
Yeah, Your Honor.
The, the report of the, from the city administrator about the ordinance?
Yeah, Your Honor, we probably should do a staff, we usually typically have done a staff report before, but that's fine. It can happen right now if you want.
Why don't you go ahead and give the staff report then? We do not have it on the script, so missed that one, darn it.
Sorry. Your Honor and counsel, this is, uh, simply something I brought forward to Stephen when we were reviewing the, the code book three or four weeks ago is our Riverton Municipal Code currently has eight pages of eight and a half by eleven papers that talk about a few motions that the council can do. It talks about reconsideration, tabling. Well, things have evolved quite a lot in the last fifty-some years. The code that this currently refers to was adopted back in the late nineteen fifties, early nineteen sixties. Not much of this rules of procedure has been addressed in the last sixty years by any elected body. So it's simply my idea that the council adopt Robert's Rules of Order as their, um, rules of authority and procedure during public meetings. And it just kind of made sense. There is one small paragraph in here that says if we're inconsistent, then we can refer to this. Very seldom in meetings do we look back at the Riverton Municipal Code when we're talking about motions. We look at this. This book was initially, um, published in eighteen seventy-six, so it's been in existence for a hundred and thirty-eight years. There's been eleven editions that have been adopted since then. But again, we've been going out of the tenth edition since I've been here, which was, um, published in about two thousand. The eleventh edition has been, uh, published since two thousand and eleven. So simply, um, simply put, it was just an ordinance that I thought, again, going with Councilman Guard of getting laws off the books and going with a more simple procedure, which would be one paragraph stating that you adopt Robert's Rules of Order as your authority.
Okay, I remember, uh, not too long ago, we had, um, an individual come and give a training session, if you will, on Robert's Rules of Order and et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, I guess, uh, I was under the assumption that we did follow that. Anyway. Okay, um, now we'll have the public hearing. Is there anyone that would care to enter into the discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Good evening, Mayor and council people. Um, again, I'm an avid supporter of Robert's Rules of Order for meetings. I think it does help regain order and all that kind of stuff. So I would like to speak for the, um, I guess ordinance, I guess it isn't, right? Um, the only thing I can think of that would be negative about this is that council's doing this on last meetings they have as the current council and you're gonna have a new council coming in. I overall support Robert's Rules of Orders and I think simplifying the ordinances that we have for the city to deal with is a positive thing. So I think, I'm, I'm in support of it.
I think the third reading of it will be with the new council. So you'll have the opportunity to vote it down at that time if you don't feel comfortable.
Still, it'll be our fault, whatever.
Then we can blame it on you. That's right. It will be a shared responsibility. Thank you, Mike. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address this issue? Okay. There being no others to speak, Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Chair would now entertain a motion regarding, um, the the ordinance itself.
Your Honor, I would move to approve ordinance number fifteen dash zero zero one on first reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to, uh, approve this ordinance on first reading. Um, is there discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard?
I would suppose there's no rush since we've been in the fifties doing this. You could certainly table this and let the next council have their way. I know how you feel about passing stuff on councils in December. I know how you feel about passing stuff on councils in December, and so it wouldn't hurt. There is no rush. There could be nobody come back and say we pushed something on them that wasn't what they wanted. I would recommend that. Thank you.
Is that a motion to table then?
Just for discussion, whatever you guys want is fine with me. I really don't care. I just don't want the thought that we push some erroneous thing down some of the council's throat.
We'll have one more reading.
I realize that, Your Honor.
Before, so we can think about it, so.
Yeah, Your Honor, I, I know the only reason this kind of came up was that we send in our code amendments once a year, and so we thought if we got it through, then that would be taken off the books and wouldn't show up in our code book anymore, because it, it only gets updated once a year. We did bring up the thing, it looks like we're doing it at the last minute, and the only reason it came up the last minute, because senior staff is starting to review the code book, and this was reviewed, and we go, wow, we need to make some changes to it.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
I think it's notable that the code does say that the rules of parliamentary practice contained in Robert's Rules of Order shall govern the council in all cases in which they are applicable and in which they are not inconsistent with the provisions of this chapter. So in the end, I think it has a lot more to do with bookkeeping and killing less trees than it does with actually changing any of the substance of what we do. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
That's why I didn't touch that section of, so you would have something on the books that you could deal with if you wanted to simply revise, and that's what the revision is, is what he just stated. But another item is, you know, on the second reading of an ordinance, we usually put it on the consent agenda. So I guess I would need some direction from the council, or Stephen would, to see if you want to leave that as an agenda item, and then you could table it and then have two meetings in January to, to do that if you'd like. It's just another suggestion.
Your, Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard.
I did, I did read through the ordinance, and you're not supposed to get a second bite until everybody else does, but I, I think just the thought, there's no rush here, which has been there since the fifties, and so no one can come back and say, gosh, look what you pushed off on us. I think it's a good idea to, to, maybe it isn't a good idea to table it. Tableting it forces our hand to come back immediately. Maybe we just bring it back up in January and let the new council have their will with it. And it may cause you a little bit of paperwork, but for heaven's sakes, it's been there since nineteen fifty. What's the rush? Thank you, Your Honor.
Is, is it a time-sensitive thing as far as the publishing of the laws or anything? I mean, would you have time enough to do this in January?
Yes. We simply, for the codification, which is this whole book, we send to a company, and then they put it all together, and we send them our ordinances once a year, which is usually in January. It takes until March for us to get those, but it's, it's really no big deal. We did discuss the timing issue, but I pushed him a little bit too hard, I think, about the codification part, so.
I, I guess I don't have any feelings on it one way or the other. It's just the will of the council.
I would be willing to withdraw my motion if second was willing to withdraw their second, and we could leave it for another day. Were you the second on it?
No, I'm not gonna withdraw my second.
Okay.
I'm gonna be here next year. I'm voting on it now. So I'll either vote on it or we won't.
Hmm. What does Robert's Rules of Order say about that?
He's got the right to withhold.
As a point of reference.
Right to withhold.
We, we have a second, but we don't have a motion.
No, I can't withdraw my motion once it's been seconded unless the seconder's willing to do so.
Okay. All right. So is there any other comments anyone would like to make? Councilman Canaan, any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So it has been approved for the first reading. Okay, reports and comments, council committee reports and council members roundtable. Councilman Larson, would you lead off, please?
Your Honor, the only thing I have is some people have been walking on the rails to trails and the, the crosswalk. It appears to be obliterated between the Pure Gas Road and the Prison Farm Extension, and I was wondering if we could possibly get some type of white lines on there as a crosswalk. It is the extension of the Rails Trails Clear to the Honor Farm, and there was originally some type of crosswalk there, and that's becoming a busier and busier road there on, on Webwood, and that was all. Thank you.
Good suggestion. Councilman Fabian?
Your Honor, the only thing I have to report is there is a meeting of the Parks and Trails Committee tomorrow evening. Is it at five fifteen, Kyle? Is that correct?
Your Honor, I believe it's at five o'clock.
Five o'clock at the, at the School District twenty-five, meeting room there. So I believe they're discussing safety surrounding the parks and trails at that meeting, and so if you are so inclined to attend, please do so, and I think that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Christensen?
No committees to report on.
Okay, Councilman Canaan?
Sir, just a couple of quick comments. I know we're coming up into the, into the year and Christmas time here. I personally would like to thank all the city employees for all the hard work they've done over the, over the last year, all the various projects and, and things they've been doing. And I'd like to send out a special thanks to all the men and women from Wyoming that are serving in our military, especially those that are deployed at this time of year and won't have the opportunity to be with their families and their loved ones over the Christmas.
Thank you. Councilman Guard?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. City administrators, report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Our next week work session, we'll have the rendezvous committee presentation, and also the school bus driver sign violations. They're gonna come and give a presentation to us. They came and spoke to the mayor and I, I don't know, a month or so ago. They've got some new cameras on their buses, and they were having issues with people running right through those lights, and so we thought it'd be a good idea to get the word out so we don't have anybody get run over. As of today, we still don't have any applications for Ward Two vacancy, so would encourage people that live in the Ward Two, if you're interested in serving on the council, and to put your application in. We got a little bit of time. I think we have till January twelfth, but encourage you to do that.
Can you, just give us a, for the public at home, Ward Two encompasses what part of the community?
It's, it's kind of the center part of the community, so Ward One is pretty much everything east of Federal, and Ward Two is kind of the center section of town, and then Ward Three is kind of the, the western part and south.
Okay, so like from Federal to First Street would be this?
No, I think, isn't, isn't Ward Two to the, let me get my direction straight, the south, south of Main? Is that correct? Or is it the opposite?
Yeah, except.
It's north and south.
Is it both?
Yeah.
From Federal to Eighth? Okay.
Yes.
Federal to Eighth. Got it.
Or up to Eighth Street it is?
Yeah.
Okay. That gives us more to, more to choose from then.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Guard?
It breaks on First Street, right north of the lumberyard, and runs down through Ashgrove Park and across up into Valley High. So everything above First Street is in Ward Three. So from First Street on the other side of Martin Lumber, Dodd-Fellows Hall is in Ward Three, and everything that lies to the south of that street is in, clear to Federal, is in Ward Two, and runs clear to the north and clear to the south.
Okay.
And we also have a map on the website. If you need to see it visually, you can go on there, and it has the boundaries of the different wards.
If there's anyone that's interested that has any questions or are not sure, we'd be happy to, to, to clarify that for you. We do need to have good people step up, and it's fairly painless, so. Fairly painless.
The final item was the city and idea will be going down to Cheyenne this next week for the SLIB, SBLC, meeting to, for the top five elected officials about the Honor Farm property. And there's been some discussion that it would be beneficial to have the mayor-elect attend that meeting with us so that the top five elected officials would know that, that the new mayor is in support of this transaction. And so I guess I would ask the council if, by some sort of motion, to support the option of him going down there to that meeting, and, and the, the city would cover his expenses, and the expenses would just be a one-night hotel and, and meals.
Okay. Your Honor? Okay, yes.
Have we, is Lars amenable to that?
Yeah, yes.
So would anyone care to make that motion?
Your Honor, I would move to have the mayor-elect travel with the present council to the meeting.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mayor votes aye. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Weaver?
No.
Thank you for that. I think, I, I agree. I think it will help to have, to give them the assurance that the incoming official is supportive of, of the efforts that we're trying to make, and I think that's, if there's any way that they can figure out that there's any challenge here, I'm afraid they would use it. So I think it's just, it will also give Lars the opportunity to spend a little bit of time with the elected officials and get a little better understanding of how those meetings are handled and whatnot. So I think it's, it's money well invested by the city. I just like to, first of all, compliment the city staff on the Christmas lights, the way we have downtown. They look beautiful. I was down the other night, and they really do brighten up the area and, and look real nice. My wife asked me the other day, though, why they didn't put any snowflakes on the ones on the median strips, and I said, I don't have any ideas, so. I don't know if they ran out or forgot to put them on or what, but, so I've got a lady at home that looks at things like that fairly closely as well. On, on the other issue, we're having an FCAAG meeting tomorrow night, the Fremont County Association of Government, and it's going to be the, the Christmas meeting and whatnot. And I had sent an email around to the council regarding the possibility of the city of Riverton making a donation to the Lander Community Center, and I had talked to Gary Michaud, Mayor Wolf's right-hand man, and Gary indicated that they have bricks that they can put in that would have our name associated as being a sponsor, and one of those is two thousand dollars, and so that's not a lot of money, and I think it would go a long way to help solidify relations with the city of Riverton and the city of Lander. FCAAG does a lot to do that. Mayor Wolf and I have gone round and round on a lot of different issues, but we're always on the same page of trying to do what's in the best interest of, of the Fremont County and, and whatnot. So I think they would see that as a, a very nice gesture if we'd be willing to do it. And I know Sandy has offered to donate a little bit myself, and I certainly would be happy to kick in a little bit, so, but I think it needs to be in the name of the city for it to have that, that merit, so. I'd entertain a motion at this time if we would like to do that, and.
Your Honor, did you own a mountain mind or?
Two thousand dollars.
Thousand? And, Your Honor?
Yes.
Is there funding available in the budget for something like this?
Yeah, Your Honor, I looked up in promotion and development in the mayor and council budget, and I think we could probably squeeze by with two thousand. I tried to add up what the, the cost would be through the rest of the year, and I think, I think we can do that.
In that case, Your Honor, I would move to, to give two thousand dollars to the city of Lander for their community center.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. It is their discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mayor votes aye, and we have one no, I believe. Okay, motion passes. It's my understanding that we're having an executive session this evening. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into an executive session for the purpose of personnel, considering the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five, AII, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiation in accordance with Wyoming statute.
Your Honor, I would move to convene into executive session for personnel.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.